I have thirty-six according to my computer and I'm gonna call this to order. I need a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I move to accept the consent agenda.
Livy said, calls a motion and who seconds?
I'll second.
Kennedy seconds. Are there any questions about the consent agenda?
I have a question about the minutes and it's not anything about recording it, it's just a kind of a follow-up. So I don't have to ask it later. Oh, it's about the Civic Plus and the design and development of the website that we didn't, that's new news. That's great.
Yes.
And you're anticipating a launch in the middle of early September?
Yes.
Wow, congratulations. I'm so pleased to have that marketing piece. And done. That'll be wonderful. Anyway, it's just, I think I get a double take.
Yeah, it'll be much better. We've done the kickoff meeting and so we're now kind of figuring out what we want to transfer over to the new page. And in our capital fund budget, we had funds to purchase new software so that we could allow online tenant payments and remote work order system and lots of new features that will be convenient for both the tenant, the applicant, and for us. They can also do online applications that way and check their status on the waiting list and submit updates and all kinds of things. So it's very exciting to be that and kind of along that line, we have also been, I've been talking with some companies since we're now kind of operating in a whole new world. I've been talking with DocuSign in order to be able to get electronic signatures on recertification packets, packet reset document, those kind of things. And also with Virtu for encryption of email data that we need to send across email. So it's gonna be a bit of an expense, not near as bad as I thought it was gonna be. Probably about three thousand dollars a year altogether for those two things, but I think it'll really enhance the upgrades that we're making on the website and in our kind of new work environments.
Is there, has Civic Plus Plus worked with any other housing authorities? I know a lot of housing authorities are under city government. Have they, with regard to receiving applications or helping process, is that a process they've ever helped with?
I don't think they've worked with any other housing authority, other housing authorities, but we did talk to them about the software that we're looking to purchase and integrating that into the software. So they seem rather confident that there would be no problem with that and of course they'll have some conversation, I'm sure, with the software company.
Sure.
And there are, they do have some options also that we could purchase for online payments and one have you to integrate in the event there were any discrepancies in the software requirement. So one way or another, I believe it'll happen.
Well, I think it's wonderful and you don't have to pay for them, anybody to travel here because we're right in town.
Yeah.
That's great.
And there's Phil. Welcome.
Hello, Phil.
Hey, Phil.
Hello.
All right, here you are.
Okay, you're good.
Okay, so we are discussing the consent agenda. Joanne, did you have anything else? I mentioned in the in my report that HUD had just released a PIH notice, a Public Mandiant Housing Notice twenty dash zero five, which presented options for a lot of different statutory and regulatory waivers in the Section Eight and public housing programs. So we will be adopting some of those waivers. It just kind of gives us more flexibility in completing our normal day-to-day operational things, recertifications and that kind of thing. It's a sixty-three-page document, so it took a little bit to get through. But it's a bit of a relief. I think there are more, there is more guidance coming forward, but these are the immediate things that they had. Some things like we can, we can hold off on the Section Eight initial inspections when we issue vouchers and somebody finds a unit, as long as the landlord will certify that there's no life-threatening deficiencies like smoke detectors or broken windows or that kind of thing in the unit. And then we can go back and inspect the unit later. We can have tenants self-certify their income because there's a lot of employers that are not in the office to verify income for us. So we can have tenants self-certify their income and they'll have to sign a certification stating that it's true and correct to the best of their knowledge and understand that if they don't give us all of their income and we catch it, we're gonna go back and they're gonna pay back. But so a lot of things to just kind of make life easier during this transition while people are working from home and doing those kind of things. So we were happy to see that. We also know that we're going to be getting more operating subsidy as a result of the pandemic. We don't know how much or how they're gonna distribute it or when. We just know there's gonna be more money coming. So we're very happy about that.
Absolutely.
We've been working, well, I guess I'll save that update for when we talk about the COVID-19 update. So that, I think that's all I needed to add.
Thank you. Yeah.
I forgot to unmute. Have we found out how much money we are actually getting from that? No, no, haven't. I did also get a notice from the city today that they had received three hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars to be spent in COVID-19-related items and asked if we had any needs and we always have needs. So I did respond and tell them that we could use some money for some of the computer equipment and software that we are purchasing to make this transition work. And I'd like to see some funds for residents who might get behind on their rent through all of this, their rent and their utilities through all of this pandemic crisis. As long as it's related to the pandemic, the reason that they can't pay their rent. So those are a couple of the things that I submitted.
I did see an email today, it was the second time, and I hadn't, I don't know if I sent it to you the first time. It was from Debbie Nuss and the Wellness Coalition asking if the, any nonprofit organizations had any needs. And I sent it to Julie Walter and she submitted it and said that they needed hand sanitizer and masks. I didn't know if you had a, if they've touched base with you, they should have. You're bigger than, a bigger operation here than they are locally, but I just.
Was it in the form of a survey?
Yep.
Yes, I did it.
You did? Okay, good. All right, good. So if any of you know of any of needs around the community, let me know. I'll just send you that survey so we can get all the bases covered. Thanks.
Are there any other questions about anything in the consent agenda? If not, then I'll call a question.
Jan.
Yes.
Ida.
Yes.
Livy.
Yes.
Linda.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Phil.
Yes.
And Jamie.
Yes.
Hi, Jamie.
Hi, sorry, I had some trouble getting logged in. I didn't realize I'd have to go through a new login process, so it took me longer than I planned.
No, you're fine.
Okay, so the next thing on the agenda, Commissioner's comments. Does anybody have anything special they'd like to talk about?
Okay. I like meeting in person.
Well, we all prefer meeting in person, but this is a lot safer. On the new business, I like, I think we need to do two separate motions, one for the first item and then one for the second, the third, second and third items. So can I have a motion on the approval for the permanent utility and drainage?
Madam Chair, I move to reauthorize the Executive Director of the Manhattan Housing Authority to negotiate the permanent utility and drainage easement agreement and the permanent easement donation agreement with the City of Manhattan to allow necessary drainage improvements upon HUD approval.
Hey, Jan, we need to go back to old business.
We do?
Yeah.
Okay, old business. All right. Let's, I'd like a second to that motion and then we'll table it to go back to old business.
Second.
Okay, Livy seconds. All right, we'll go back to the old business with the update on the MHA operations. And I presume that's Joanne. Yes. I just wanted to kind of bring everybody up to speed on where we are. I think I sent out an email a while ago, but for the public to know, our offices obviously are still close to the public. Most of the staff is working remotely most of the time. We do have staff in the office, at least, there's usually at least two staff, two to three staff in the office at a time as necessary. The front desk person is always in every day to put rents in the computer, get the applications out of the Dropbox and do all of those necessary things. And then other work that is needed, filing and getting the messages and what have you. And she is monitoring the messages that come in for work orders and what have you, even when she's not home, and emails. And the rest of the staff is, when they're working from home, they're able to check their voicemails and their emails remotely and respond to those. The maintenance staff are here every day. They're only going into apartments for emergency work orders or for in vacancies to do unit turnover. And this is a, this is a good time of the year, most days, or some days, maybe I should say, to do some, get some outside work done. One of the things we were a bit worried about was the HUD inspections that were scheduled to be held in March, February, February or March. And those were canceled. And in the HUD notice that came out, I should have said this during that update, but in the HUD notice that came out, they've canceled all the REAC inspections, the HUD inspections for the rest of this year. So we were a bit relieved about that because we're not able to get into the unit and do some of the repairs that needed to be done before they got here. They are also carrying all of the scores from 2018 forward to 2019. They're not rescored for 2019. On that note, I will tell you that if they did rescore us, our grade would be up by nine points in financial and two points in management. So we would have gained eleven points out of the twenty that we need already. But that does give us another year to meet those goals on that recovery plan. However, you know, I, when I was speaking with Daniel at HUD the other day, I told him, I said, Danny, we don't need another year. We're gonna have this done. So hopefully by the end of this year, we'll have all of the points and then some that we need. So that was good. It was kind of good news and kind of not. We were kind of looking forward to seeing those increased numbers. And we could request to have, to be rescored, but there's really no point in it unless it's gonna change our designation. So we decided to not, not be rescored. So that was, that was good news that those inspections were gonna be canceled. Anyway, so we are operating as much as we can under the conditions that we have. We're still processing applications. Patrick is still doing move-in inspections. We're still occupying units. Kat will be issuing some vouchers. I know she had planned to do it this week. Mandy, do you know if she still plans to? Yes?
Yeah, she does.
Tomorrow?
Yeah, tomorrow.
Tomorrow. So she will be having a remote briefing session with about fifteen people to issue some new vouchers. And we're gonna just keep on rocking and rolling during all of this. So we have also made our applications available. They're available online. They're available by calling and asking us to mail an application. And we've also installed boxes on the outside of the building so that people can just come up to the front door and grab an application out of the information boxes at the front door. So that's kind of where we are. I did have a call from where the caseworkers at Via Christie. And I think the ER doctors were wanting to know what would, what our plan would be in the event that we had a positive case in either the apartment towers or Carlson Plaza as far as quarantine goes. And, you know, I explained to them, you know, we really have no mechanisms to make sure that somebody doesn't leave their apartment. We could certainly assist in arranging some services for, excuse me, grocery delivery or those kinds of things, but and on our, our community care team call today, I learned that they do have in place a, I don't remember what he called it, but it's kind of a, someplace that people can go that can't otherwise effectively quarantine. Excuse me. So that was good news to hear. I had reached out to Andy at the Riley County Health Department, but I hadn't heard back from him. So Josh was able to fill me in on that. So that's kind of where we are. As far as the residents go, they seem to be doing well with quarantine, or not quarantining, but social distancing and, and doing what they're supposed to be doing. You know, there, we don't see a lot of activity out and about, so we think we're in pretty good shape there. We are disinfecting, of course, the common areas every day and just maintaining the best we can. Okay. Anybody have any questions about any of that?
Is it an entirely enclosed ventilation system? Like, does all the duct work go to all of the apartments?
No.
Okay.
No. Okay. Good question, Livy. Anybody else? One of the, one of the suggestions that we had gotten was to, for the elevator doors to stay open longer so that they didn't close so quickly and maybe let them, when it comes back down to the first floor, to have the elevator doors stay open. But we checked with the elevator company and our, our elevators don't have that capacity. But they did increase the roof fan, the speed on the fan that pulls air out of the roof, so that will help something. Yeah, those elevators are pretty old to have that kind of controls.
They're calling that, that location an alternate care
site.
Site, S-I-T-E.
Yes, you're right.
And so if someone's in a nursing home, maybe they break their hip and they don't want, when they get ready to leave, they need a place to go for rehab, but they can't, can't get into a nursing home like Meadowlark, like I did, and they can't stay in the hospital. So this is an alternate site for them.
Yes.
It's also a place for someone who no longer, who has the virus, who no longer needs to be in the hospital. This is a kind of a recuperative location for them, so they don't go back to their family and infect them. And it's also a place for what you described, well, for emergency services workers. So I talked with a fireman here who said, you know, I am so concerned about after I handle someone with the virus. And, you know, in my ignorance, I guess, I didn't know that they don't have a place where they go back to the fire station and decontaminate. And so this is gonna be a place where they can go to, to clean up and be, and stay and be away from their family. And it may be some time before they go home, but at least they are in between work where the germs are and their family that they're trying to keep safe. And that means they will be, what? Their minds will be much clearer and able to concentrate and focus on their work rather than worrying about all this other stuff. So Iran fear has been heavily involved in that location kind of thing and finding it. And I think they're gonna announce it in the next, maybe they did, they may have told you, Joanne, but they were looking at the Sheraton. And the Sheraton management just would not, wasn't to work, they couldn't reach closure. So you may know that the Holiday Inn Express down at the Blue Earth Plaza has been closed. He has, Colin Noble owns the Holiday Inn by the campus and the Express, and so the Holiday Inn Express has been just closed because there weren't any customers for all these hotels. And so he is working with them and that, the last I heard, which is something I got in the mail a little bit ago and could change before they announce it, but that's where this site is gonna be. So I, and that's what this three hundred and some thousand dollars because it's gonna cost like, I don't know, sixty-seven, sixty, fifty thousand dollars a month if we needed two months. So they're gonna, they're looking for, it has to be virus-related, so ways to spend the money. And, and I think that's a good, you know, in, in New York, that Javits Center has been a site of a tent that the Army Corps of Engineers has erected. And so I'm glad we have a good sort of solution here and I'm glad it's not a a tent with a lot of beds lined up. I'm glad that there's a room for someone with privacy and to be in their various stages of healing or their various stages of what they need. So sounds like a good solution to me, anyway.
That sounds like an excellent solution. And I know that emergency services are gonna be reaching out to a lot of the various apartment complexes in town like us and Colorado Plaza and Garden Grove. And they're just asking us to let them know that should we have a case, we would be in need of a place for these people to go.
Absolutely. And your other, you know, there, the other thing you might ever be prepared, Jan, you may know more about this than I do from Steve, but if you ever, like the people at Dylan's that they've identified, they're trying to trace back, and I think they send the police to do it, which is just kind of fine, it's intimidating. To get people to think back, who, who are all the people you've been in touch with? Oh, my gosh. So I couldn't even remember, so I start, a week or so ago, I thought, gee, I don't even know what day I did what. So I've started keeping track of that on my little electronic calendar, trying to say, today I went to the drive-up at such and such a place, you know, just so I can reinvent what my history, if I ever needed to. I don't, I don't think I went to Dylan's on those two days. Anyway, I don't go very often. Anyway, thanks. That was enough enough. I just, I thought it, sometimes it's helpful to have some, just some real-life stories to talk about and know about and helps you talk to your neighbors and, and keep them informed too. Because even as a commissioner, I find myself saying, how come I didn't know that? You know, it's, it's important information in the community. I know people want to hear it, would, would love to hear it, but there's, it's like there's a lid on things right now. So I think it's important that we share the kind of things that, among our group of ten or however many.
We certainly, we certainly need to, I'm concerned about our first responders and our hospital staff and so forth and the people who work in the markets, just the stress. You know, they say they want you to do things that de-stress, even if you're home. And we're certainly totally de-stressed because our friends and our family have sort of locked us in and we haven't been anywhere. But I think that as our medical people especially get more stressed, they're more likely to get sick. And so it would be great to have a place for them to go home to so that relieves the stress of worrying about their families. Okay, is there anything else regarding the housing authority and the virus situation? Well, the only thing I would say is if anybody knows of any resources for getting like Clorox wipes or hand sanitizer because as you know, you can't just walk into the store and buy it, that would be great. We've checked so many resources and we've had it on order, we've had it on back order for the longest time. We ordered hand sanitizing stations to put by the elevators at Carlson Plaza and in the apartment towers and they're still not here. And so if anybody sees any gallons of hand sanitizer or Clorox wipes, pick them up, we'll pay you back.
Hy-Vee has them. Hy-Vee has sanitizer by the liter. I think it's like eleven dollars and sixty-six cents, something like that. And then they have Clorox wipes for four dollars and eighty-eight cents, but they're only allowing one person to buy one of each.
So if I come pick you up, we'll have to all go to Hy-Vee and check out separately. I'm not allowed out. Okay. Today, Kennedy? Huh? That was today? Um, every time I've gone there, the last three times. Oh. I was just in there yesterday. I didn't see it. They have it, so when I went there on Sunday, they had them in carts by the checkout. Okay. By the time I got there that day, because I would have seen them. And then the sanitizer, they had it, they had carts by the checkout, but I've also seen it where they have it over by the candy. I don't know why. No. I wouldn't have thought of looking there, but I will keep checking. Some days I make a trip to each store just to see if I can find them. Dylan's has like the four-pack of wipes, it's not the Clorox wipes, it's the Kroger brand, but they're still disinfecting wipes. And they were allowing three per person. And the last time I was there, there was probably six or seven on the shelf and somebody else was standing there to get them, like a couple other people. And I just couldn't take three when the other people were standing there to get them. No fights in the aisles at the grocery store.
The best solution I've heard is for those communities that have a distillery that they are able to convert over to an alcohol process and they're making the disinfectant solution. I don't think we have one, do we?
No, because the brewery doesn't count. It has to be a distillery.
Has to be whiskey, right?
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna move back now to the motion that's on, that we tabled. This is now, I'm gonna bring it back up to approve the drainage easement. Does anybody have any questions for Joanne on anything in there? Or Joanne, do you think you need to explain anything? No, the only thing I would add to No, the only thing I would add to this is that we are waiting on HUD approval. I did talk to HUD today and they said it was approved. They thought I would have the letter before the end of today, but it didn't come through. So HUD has actually approved the request conditioned on an environmental review, which Eric and Christine are working on over at the city, so.
Okay. Anybody have any more questions about that? I think we discussed it pretty thoroughly when it came up.
I just want to be sure. You, Joanne, have you had conversations with the gasmen's or is the city talk? Is somebody, is somebody talking to the gasmen's?
Yes, Leon Brown over at the city. And I believe Rob Ott has had lots of conversations. I know Leon has had lots of conversations with the gasmen's, as well as the Krauses who, who live just adjacent to the gasmen's because they both had easements going through their properties too. So there's been a lot of conversation with both of them.
Well, I, I wanted to give them a call, but I hesitated because I didn't want to create a, you know, a problem. So I didn't, but I wanna, I, I just wanted to be sure that everybody's communicating. Thank you. Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, if there's no, if there are no other questions, I call the question.
Jan?
Yes.
Ida?
Yes.
Livy?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
And Jamie?
Yes.
Okay, on, now on the approvals for the income limits, I think we can have one motion for B and C.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve Resolution Number 40120-A, adopting the 2020 income limits effective April 1, 2020 for the public housing and Section 8 HCB programs.
And?
And also that we approve Resolution Number 41520-B, adopting the 2020 MTSP income limits for FHI apartments shall be effective April 16, 2020.
Need a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Kennedy.
That was Ida.
Ida, I'm sorry. Well, it was right on top of her. Are there any questions that are any, either of those? They're sort of standard stuff that we do every year. No questions? Are we good? I might call the question on that motion. Mandy? You're muted. Mandy?
I mute myself first. Jan?
Yes.
Ida?
Yes.
Livy?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
And Jamie?
Okay, there's, there's not anything else on the agenda, but I had talked to Joanne about something else.
Drop the goal. Dan? That's what you?
Yeah, I'm pointing, I'm pointing at you.
Okay, yeah, I, I'm sorry, I meant to bring this up under Director's report. So looking at the goals, y'all had asked that I send out an update each quarter. I did not get an update typed up. Dan had asked me to just provide a verbal report. And I, I will send out a written update later, but I'll just go through these real quick and kind of let you know where we are with these things. Number, the first item was the financial, to increase the financial score, which I reported earlier, we did, we, we did increase the financial score by nine points. If we had been scored this year, I'll put it that way, we would have increased our financial score by nine points. And that's a good start. The next item was capital improvements, the fire sprinkler system for the apartment towers. I'm working on a RFQ for the engineer. I, the, item B under that was to pursue CDBG funding for the first phase of that project. And I did put in an application for CDBG funds, and I believe it is going to go through CDBG. That will have to be coordinated with the city. They will be doing some, some additional work on the corner here of Fourth and, or Fifth and Lebanon, I believe. And that will be just getting the, the water supply to the building for that sprinkler system. The Carlson Plaza improvements to research options for improvement at Carlson Plaza, kind of like we have done here at the apartment towers. Marlene Irvine was working on a, a realtor's appraisal for us on the building, and she did call and ask me a couple of questions. I have not gotten it back from her yet, but we're kind of in that process. And that's kind of the first thing we really need to know before we can know what direction we need to go with that project. Because there are several different models under the rental demonstration program or rental assistance demonstration program. And it depends on how much work needs to be done in the building and what percentage of its value the work is. So that's something we'll have to get. I think we wanted to get a second one too, and I have made a couple phone calls in that regard. I haven't gotten any response, but I will keep trying. Expanding the security camera system at the apartment towers is something that was kind of a lower priority, I think, when we talked about the, the goals. We, we believe we still need to do this. I mean, there's plenty of activity that happens on the floors that we don't see after it leaves the first floor. And sometimes it's just very helpful in, in keeping track of what's happening in the building, whether it has to do with residents or whatever, visitors or unwanted visitors or whatnot. But we're gonna keep that on the list, at, maybe as a lower priority. Having, receiving some money for the, from CDBG to do the fire sprinkler system will free up some money in the capital fund program. So we'll kind of keep it on the, on the list, but not necessarily as a higher priority. Increasing the capital fund program and physical assessment subsystem scores, again, those infections have been canceled. So our score will carry forward from 2018 and hopefully be conducted in early 2021 and will see an increase, hopefully.
Abby needs to go back out.
I'm sorry? Oh, the next one was board training, and there just isn't anything available right now. All conferences and what have you have been canceled. So I'm sorry, guys, there isn't anything out there for you or for us. The next one was under management to increase the management assist, assessment subsystem score. We did increase that by two points this year. And we think at the end of 2020, it'll be up by much more than that as our occupancy just continues to climb. So we're doing pretty good in that area. And under Section 8, maintaining at least 98% utilization, we're there. Excuse me, you guys. I'm not sick, I promise, I'm not sick. We are, well, we're right now at 95.8%, but once she issues these vouchers, we'll be at 98%. So that's one of those programs, we just kind of have to watch through the years, people fall off the program, then we have to bring new people on.
Great.
And then including landlord and tenant information on a revised website, that, that works, that's in the process. And management contracts, we're discussing increasing occupancy through outreach and marketing. And we have increased the occupancy from 65 to 82%.
Wow.
That's a big increase. Patrick's been working really hard out there. It, it needs to be a little bit higher, but we're, we're making it. And then implementing, evaluating and implementing more cost-effective measures for providing property management as something that's just kind of an ongoing thing. So that's it.
Hey, I had, I had reminded Joanne that we had suggested that she report each quarter after the quarter, so that made that today. And I didn't think to remind her until today. So thank you, Joanne, for checking through that. And it'll be nice if you send some of that information in writing as well.
Thank you for reminding me.
Yeah. And then we have the whole other set of stuff because of the scoring and stuff. So does anybody have anything else they'd like to ask or bring up?
Joanne, I'd like to ask, you said we've gotten nine points, I think, seven?
Nine.
Nine. Nine. How many more points would we need before we could request that reassessment you talked about?
We needed 21 points altogether, so we've got 11 now. So we would need 10 more.
10 more, okay.
But we can only request the, they're going to assess us at the end of each fiscal year unless we have another pandemic or this one continues for that long.
So that'll be, that'll be September 30th then, right?
Yeah, no, December 31st. But I, we can request it.
Yeah. Is that possible? Is it, go ahead and, is it possible we can get the 10? If we, I mean, are there, is there low-hanging fruit or have we already captured that?
No, I think we can, we can get there.
Okay.
You know, we're, we're on the, we're on the, I guess, our financial picture is looking much better. It's not perfect, it's not great, but it's much better.
But it has improved. And HUD would say the same thing, right?
Yes.
Things are looking up for us? Okay, good. All right. Thank you.
Okay, so Joanne will send us that extra information about her quarterly report in, in an email for y'all to look over in case you have anything else you want to ask. If there are no other questions for the good of the order, it is 6:19 and I think we can adjourn. It's very nice to see all your faces, I'm happy to see you. I'm happy to see people.
Stay safe, everybody.
Joanne, I was thinking.